Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The February 16th Troy City Council meeting is called to order, and we welcome all of you here this evening. And we're pleased to have with us Mark Nowak from the First Baptist Church who will give us our invocation, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. Thank you.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, I know you are a sovereign, holy God, but one who is loving and merciful. Thank you for the blessings you've bestowed upon this nation for each of us individually. You've blessed us. Thank you for the heritage we have, for the freedoms that we possess. Lord, we pray today for our nation. We pray that you keep us militarily strong and financially strong, give us or give the new administration wisdom as it looks to address the issues facing our nation. May appropriate action be taken to stimulate our economy. Lord, we also pray today for our state and for our community of Troy. May you keep our families strong and our citizens employed. May you give the men and women here today wisdom to understand the issues facing this community and the insight to improve the quality of life for all of those involved. Thank you for those that volunteer, for those that serve, for those that look to make Troy a better place. Lord, may all that is said and done here be done in a way that is honoring and pleasing to you. Lord, we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with everything and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Nowak. We appreciate you coming this evening. May we have the roll call, Mrs. Plata?
Mayor Schelling.
Here.
Councilwoman Beltramey.
Here.
Brumfield.
Here.
Eisenbecker.
Here.
Fleming.
Here.
Karlek.
Here.
And Kerwin.
Here. Coram present. This evening, we begin with some presentations, two service commendations, and a proclamation. And so I will go down to the front to present those on behalf of council. Our first one is for Bonnie Avery, and she has her own film crew with her. So if we could have Bonnie come forward, please. We'll try to position ourselves so you get all your... Yes, come right... Sure, you want to be on? It's fun to stand here together after all these years, Bonnie. This is a service commendation for Bonnie Avery. Whereas Bonnie Avery began her employment September 12th, 1977, was the city of Troy at the library as a full-time librarian under a government program called CETA, and I remember that. When the program ended, she continued her employment while also working to obtain her Masters in Library Science. And whereas Bonnie ultimately became head of the Youth Services Division, on July 1st, 1985, Bonnie was promoted to Librarian II. And whereas Bonnie's favorite parts of her job have been storytimes, working with the patrons, and continuing to expand the offerings of the Troy Public Library's youth section. And whereas Bonnie was a bit reluctant to become a storyteller, but we know you're good at it, but her supervisor insisted that she learn, and through the years, she grew to love it. Children she has read to over the years are now moms bringing their children, and moms who bring their children who are now grandmothers bringing their grandchildren to enjoy Bonnie's stories. Whereas Bonnie retired from the city of Troy, will retire, on February 20th, 2009, after 32 years of dedicated service. And whereas Bonnie has been married to her husband Doug, is that your film perm?
That's my film perm, yeah.
For more than 45 years, they have two daughters, Kathy and Laura, who Bonnie practiced her storytelling on when they were young, as five years old, and her granddaughter Lily, who also serves as an inspiration for her storytelling. And whereas in her retirement, Bonnie plans lots of travel, starting with an Eastern Caribbean cruise, spending lots of time with her new grandchild, volunteering at her church, reading the books she's piled up over the years, including the new Lincoln ones, I bet, and as well as attending lunch, movies, and trips to the casino with friends. Now, therefore be it known that the City Council of the city of Troy takes this opportunity to express its appreciation to Bonnie Avery for her many contributions to the betterment of the city, and be it further known that the Troy City Council of the city of Troy, on behalf of themselves, city management, and the citizens of the city of Troy, extends wishes of prosperity, good health, and happiness to Bonnie during her retirement years. And this is presented on the 16th day of February 2009, and of course, signed by all, myself and all the members of council. And we're going to ask you if you want to say a few words, and I know you have some special people here with you. Here's the mic.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much. I would feel much better if this was a book. I would have no problem saying a few words, but I know there's some library advisory board is here, my husband is here, my boss, Director Kathy, is here. This is a great place to work, the city is, the library has been... I kind of go reluctantly, but they made an offer I couldn't refuse.
I want a branch on it.
And I have a brand new, only three months old, so this has kind of pushed me into doing this. It wasn't that I don't enjoy it anymore, but I, over 32 years, I've enjoyed coming to work every day, really, I have. So it's been a... I've worked other places where I haven't looked forward to getting up and going to work, so it's been a pleasure. And everybody has been so nice to me this week, so I'm not quite sure whether they're glad to see me go, or... But they are really nice at the library, so I'm sure that must be it. So thank you so much.
Thank you. All of you. I had to take my big drink of water for this next one. If I could have Wayne Wright come up, and Rhea, will you come up with Wayne? Being that you're used to sitting right in front of your name, I thought you'd stand in front of your name here. Besides being presented with Wayne's service commendation, giving him his name plate from his many years on Planning Commission, and before I read the service commendation, the educator in me just couldn't resist. Many folks do not realize that Wayne's 27 years on the Planning Commission, from July 27th, 1981 until December of 2008, have been filled with a very strong and important job for all this community, and you're going to see why. Because the Planning Commission includes the following in their duties: the making and adopting of a master plan for the physical development of the municipality, and they just did the new master plan for us. But over the years, there have been amendments to the master plan, and that falls under the purview of the Planning Commission, and they meet many, many hours, many meetings on that. Such plans shall show, among other things, the commission's recommendations on the general location, character, and extent of streets, boulevards, parkways, playgrounds, parks, location of public buildings, utilities, and the change of use, extension, removal, relocation, widening, narrowing, vacating, or abandoning any of the foregoing. They also recommend, give recommendations related to the adoption of a zoning ordinance for the control of the height, area, bulk, location, and use of buildings and premises, and all changes and amendments thereto, including conditional rezoning applications as per Article 3.24. We've had many zoning ordinance changes over the years, and those come through from the Planning Commission to council for approval. The Planning Commission also recommends approval to City Council of all preliminary plaques, subdividing land, site condominium plans, planned unit developments... Is this too long?
No.
Some special use approval applications, and any amendments or alterations thereof. The recommendation to City Council on ordinance text amendments, which are lots of times quite voluminous and need to be detailed, street and alley vacations or extensions, and historic district designations, acting as the approval authority on site plans and on most special use approval applications. Now, the reason I read that to you directly from Chapter 39 is that we have with us tonight many members of the Planning Commission who have served with Larry and our former Director of Planning, Larry Keisling, and they have come because they felt it a great honor, just as Mark Miller, our present Plan Director, fails to have you on the Planning Commission, and as the example of some of the things that you were involved in over the years. Because I also, too, went to City Council in 1981, so I thought, hmm, I know all those things that they approved. This approval of the sports center, where the ice skating arena is down on Big Beaver, Somerset North, most of the office buildings that have been developed along Big Beaver since 1981, and there have been quite a few, that's just one street in the city. The subdivisions that have gone in, all of the condominium developments that have gone in, all of the restaurants and amenities that have gone in, the changes in the street pattern, just think of what Big Beaver was like back in 81 and what it's like now. And even though it's a county road, still had to go through an approval process. Delphi, which is up across from me, all the approval on that. When things occur, they have citizens come, either in favor or against proposals if it's impacting their subdivision. So they, and they listen to all of those people, and the business community, and of course, work with staff on presenting what is best for this community. So over this period of time, Wayne Wright has been really involved in forging this community the way that it has developed and the way that it will develop in the future, because things that we do today greatly impact our future for many years to come. I know your family is very proud of you, as we all are. So this is a service commendation for you that reads, "Whereas the mayor and City Council of the city of Troy wished to express on behalf of the city their appreciation to Wayne Wright, and recognition of outstanding service for the community, and whereas he has at all times furthered those ideals that contribute to a better community. Now therefore be it resolved, the mayor and City Council, being the duly elected voice of the citizens of Troy, express the city's appreciation and recognition for this distinguished citizen's service since July 27th, 1981, through December 2008 as a member of the Planning Commission. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution is presented as a lasting expression of the city's gratitude and appreciation for his contribution to the betterment of the city of Troy, Michigan, presented in the 16th day of February 2009, signed by myself and all the members of council." And if we tried to put all of things you've done, plus all of your duties those years, we'd probably have to have five or six plaques. So let me thank you, and we're going to give you a chance to say a few words if you'd like to. Okay? You want to?
Yeah.
You want to introduce your buddies who are here and your family?
Yeah. This is my wife, Rhea, and my daughter Kristen, my daughter Ruth, and my son-in-law, Brian.
She has duties to perform?
Yes, she does.
Okay. And then I even introduce who's here from Planning Commission members. And don't forget the two ladies up here who used to serve.
Right. Mayor Schelling and council. On behalf of my father and my entire family, I would like to thank the city of Troy and the City Council for the recognition of my father's contributions to this community. My father has been a resident of the city of Troy since 1974 and joined the Planning Commission in 1981. Having served on the Planning Commission as well as the Board of Zoning Appeals for many years, he spent countless nights at meetings, helping to shape the city of Troy to what it is today. It was through his commitment to the community that my family gained an appreciation for local politics and government. This recognition means a great deal to our family and friends, especially my father. Once again, we'd like to thank City Council and Mayor Schelling for taking the time out of this evening's meeting to acknowledge my father's contributions to the city of Troy. Thank you again, and may you continue to provide excellent leadership to the city of Troy.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank my daughter, as well as Mayor Schelling and the rest of the members of the council for this recognition. It has indeed been a pleasure to spend all these years, every Tuesday night up here in City Hall. I don't know what else I would have done with all my Tuesday nights. I don't have any idea what's on television on Tuesdays anymore, but I'm sorry that I had two strokes last year and couldn't attend meetings the last several months. I hope to recover from those completely and be able to get back into it at some point. But just in case I can't, I want to thank all of you for the possibility to serve for this many years. It's not the money. But it's been a lot of fun. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And Councilwoman Kerwin and Councilwoman Beltramey both served on Planning Commission and had the pleasure of serving with Wayne, and they have good stories to tell about Folks here from Global LT, would you come on up, please, ladies? Now, over your 30 years, you know who was sitting at the Planning Commission?
Besides many others, of course.
Yes, of course. This is a proclamation celebrating 30 years for Global LT. Whereas Global LT was formed in 1979 with a mission to provide the highest quality language services to global companies, enabling their employees to live and work successfully anywhere in the world. Whereas with their headquarters in Troy, Michigan, and regional offices in Los Angeles, Phoenix, Pittsburgh, Boston, London, Hong Kong, and Shanghai, Global LT has been offering language and cultural training, translation solutions, and expatriate relocation services to their clients for 30 years. And whereas what began with founder and president Hortensia Neely's dream, Global LT started as a home-based language training company and signed Ford Motor Company as their first client. See what you can do when you have a dream?
Absolutely. It's our inspiration.
Yes. Whereas through the years, Global LT has grown to employ more than 70 people and is proud of the unique customs and talents that each individual brings to the company. Linguists, culturalists, instructional designers, project managers, and more, work together to deliver the quality services that allow businesses and individuals to communicate worldwide. The company has also cultivated a global network of experts with the service providers located all over the world who represent more than 60 foreign languages. And whereas through it all, Global LT has maintained a fine reputation for delivering a broad portfolio of services with help of their cultured workforce, which represent more than 15 nationalities and 21 different languages. With varied cultures embodied in their workforce and their services, and with their status as a certified minority-owned business, Global LT is a true representation of the city of Troy's diverse community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Troy City Council does hereby congratulate Global LT on its 30th anniversary and recognizes its impact upon thousands and thousands of lives, not just in our local community in Troy, but across the world. Be it further resolved that the City Council joins the citizens in this community in appreciation and in celebration of Global LT's 30th anniversary, presented the 16th day of February 2008.
Thank you very much.
Say a few words.
Thank you very much, and my name is Suzanne Smalski, and this is my colleague, Marissa Vasquez, and we are representing our owner, Hortensia Neely. And I know that you, we would like to express her heartfelt thanks and appreciation for this recognition. It truly means a lot to her, and we plan on at least another 30 years serving not only the Troy community, but the world community. So thank you very much, mayor and council.
Thank you. And as we're certainly in a global economy, your services are, have been needed all these 30 years, and need it even more, so...
Absolutely.
I'm sure they're very appreciative. Much success to you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Always hard to say goodbye to people that have been involved so much in the community over the years, and we do appreciate everyone individually as we appreciate businesses that have served the community. Nice way to begin the meeting. This evening, we have no carryover items. We do have a public hearing, and the first one is on Florence Street, and we do need to open the public hearing, but I understand there's something with this. Is it, who's going to present, or is there going to be a presentation?
I think it's basically to postpone the public hearing because of improper notification.
Right, but I was informed by Mrs. Bloom that I still needed to open the hearing in case there was somebody here on it, so...
Yes.
We're not going to have a presentation. We're just going to open it?
Right.
Okay, thank you. This is on asphalt paving of Florence Street in Section 9, Project Number 8.108.1. So I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone here on that item? Then I'll close the public hearing, and this is going to be postponed and come on a future agenda?
Be on March 23rd.
Pardon?
It's scheduled for March the 23rd.
March 23rd, okay.
That is the question that they proposed resolution, Mayor, and then we'll pass.
Okay. Yes. Councilwoman Kerwin?
We saw the Troy City Council by postpones action, outstanding for his mission.
just north of I-75. I-75 is actually running east to west. On January 13, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the street vacation request attached to our report is the report which we sent to the Planning Commission. This is required based upon input from the state of Michigan, the Michigan Department of Energy, Labor, and Economic Growth, Office of Land Serving, and Remuneration, which is the office responsible for the amendments of subdivisions. It was determined that there was a small portion of the first street vacation left off in the resolution, so that that had to carry through. In addition, there needed to be a correction and an actual easement recorded as part of this. So, what you have happening this evening is, one, we'll vacate a small portion of right-of-way that was left out of the original resolution. Second, vacate the public turnaround easement in Daly Street and replace it with a public vehicular maneuverability easement. Third, city council will accept the public vehicular maneuverability easement. And finally, it will direct the clerk to record the resolution and sketches plus the minutes of the meeting. That is what's happening this evening if you follow through with this complete resolution. There are no financial considerations. The legal considerations are that you have the authority to vacate the subject piece of Daly Street and to vacate the existing easement, and to also accept the easement for the area that it vacated road. This is consistent with outcome statements number 2 and 3, and your options are to approve or deny or postpone if you so desire. I'll now answer any questions you have.
Counsel, are there questions for Mr. Miller on this item before we open the public hearing? Nope, seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here on this item that wishes to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, return it to the council table for a resolution.
Mayor?
Councilman Eisenbacher?
I'd like to move the resolution as printed in our agenda.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Eisenbacher, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we approve the resolution for portions of Daly Street as printed and recorded in our agenda. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Plata?
Councilmember Beltramey?
Yes.
Brimfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
And Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. There are no postponed items this evening, so we go right on to public comment limited to items that are not on the agenda. And we have with us this evening our county commissioner, Tim Burns, who is father of new twins. I suppose every time somebody introduces you lately, they say that. Do the twins know that they're picking the, feeling your thunder there?
Yeah, I don't think they realize that, but I appreciate that because everyone understands now why my eyes are all baggy when I come up and speak, and sometimes the words are a little slurred. I'm not getting in trouble, I'm just not getting a lot of sleep.
Congratulations again to you.
Thank you, but yeah, we're pleased to welcome Maggie and Jack Burns a couple of weeks ago, and they're all healthy, and my mom's doing great, and appreciate all the well wishes that we've received from people throughout the community. I wanted to give an update on some things that are going on for county, just because I haven't been up here in a few weeks and like to stay in touch with everybody in the council and in the community. Starting tomorrow, Tuesday, February 17, is the beginning of the open enrollment session for people who want to apply for the county's summer jobs program. Now, there's two components to the summer jobs program. First of all, if you are a high school student over 16 or a college student that's a resident of Oakland County, we have special intern-type jobs for you that range anywhere from working on landscaping to working as a clerk in the Economic Development Office, to working as a laboratory assistant in some of the different labs that the county has in the medical department, to working as a law clerk. And in order to apply for these, there's a limited number of openings, and they are competitively reviewed, but to be eligible, you have to apply between February 17 and I believe it's March 2 or 3. It's a two-week window. Now, a lot of us may not be thinking of summer, especially when I unfortunately heard that we're going to be getting a little more snow in the next couple of days, but if you miss out on this two-week window that starts tomorrow, you cannot apply for a summer job if you are looking for one of these student positions for a high school or a college student. So, if you're a parent, if you're a grandparent, uncle, friend of the family, if you're one of those kids out there watching right now and you're interested in looking for a summer job, go to oakgov.com/jobs, starting tomorrow, and there'll be postings for all the different type of opportunities there are, and get that application in before the deadline. It's a strict application deadline. If you miss it, you will not be considered for a job, even if you may have done it in the past years. You have to do it in this two-week period starting tomorrow. So, again, you go to oakgov.com/jobs, or you can always go to my personal website, timothyburns.org, and we'll have information and links to those sites as well. But I encourage people to do that. Also, I know times are tough and people may be looking for work who aren't students. If you are a non-student adult, there are also a limited number of openings for summer employment with the Parks and Recreation Department, where you can work at one of the 13 county parks doing different activities, or one of our mobile travel units. In order to apply for that, again, applications start tomorrow, Tuesday, February 17, and they go for two weeks. If you want to apply for one of those part-time jobs, you need to do that now, or you lose your opportunity. Again, they are limited in number, but, and they're based on competitive review of applications through a merit system, but if you don't try to apply, you have no chance of getting those jobs, and I'd like as many people as possible to have the opportunity to apply for those positions. Next, every year I sponsor for the county National Consumer Protection Week. We partner with federal and state government authorities to promote consumer education. And the last few years, I have hosted at Walsh College a forum where we've had consumer experts come in, and we've had different themes. Last year, we had Murray Gula and Joe Gannon and Vicki Galton from the Better Business Bureau, and they talked about home improvements and ways to protect yourself when you're fixing up your house. This year, because of the state of the economy, and we've seen the stock market going down, and people are losing their jobs, there's a lot of financial turmoil going on, and I thought it was important to maybe focus on how to be smart when it comes to finances, whether you've lost your job, or you're concerned about those investments. So, we have a great panel this year. It's going to be on Saturday, March 7, at Walsh College at 1:00 p.m. It's at the Berry Center Auditorium, right on Lurinoy there, and we have Ken Ross, he's the commissioner of the Michigan State Department of Financial Insurance Regulation. So, if it's a bank, it's a stockbroker, an insurance agent, they are all regulated by his department, he's going to be there. Susan Tomper, who's the personal finance columnist for Detroit Free Press, is going to be there, and she's been recognized nationally as one of the best finance columnists and journalists in the country. We have Rick Bloom, who has a radio show, but he's also a financial columnist for Observer and Centric Newspapers. You may have seen him in Detroit Centric writing a column, I think it's every Thursday or Sunday in the paper. And we are also going to have Kathy Williams from Oakland County's Housing and Mortgage Counseling Unit. And then I'll be there to answer some questions. My other job is working with the Better Business Bureau, and I'll be there to moderate and answer questions from that perspective. So, we have a really great program. So, if you have concerns or questions about what you think you should do if you're seeing your 401K sinking or those investments, or you've lost your job and suddenly people are trying to get you to do all these financial investments, you don't know if it's a scam or a good deal, you know, you want to know what's going on, if any sort of financial type question in this current situation, they'll be there to answer those questions. You're having a problem with your mortgage, Kathy Williams can give you an unbiased opinion on what you should do to help you maybe get out of a situation or resolve a situation. She works for the county, so she doesn't have any financial interests with any sort of financial institution. So, you can get a lot of information from people who have no financial interest other than making sure that you're getting a good education and can make some smart decisions. So, again, that consumer forum on financial literacy and how to be a smart consumer during this economic turmoil is going to be on Saturday, March 7, at Walsh College, and that's at 1:00 p.m. So, again, I have some more information, it's not posted yet, but again, that's on my website, timothyburns.org. And again, if anyone ever has any questions about what's going on in the county, I'm always glad to talk with anyone about their concerns or questions. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have David Ashland.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, David.
Tonight, I want to discuss the Troy Community Center and specifically the Fitness Center. Let me start by saying I'm a member of the Fitness Center. I've been a member there since it first opened, and I don't remember when that was, but I was one of the early sign-ons. And as my benchmarking criteria, I am also presently a member of Fitness USA, another fitness club, private fitness club, and a former member of Lifetime Fitness. So, with these two private organizations as benchmarks, I think I can safely say that the Troy Fitness Center is superior in product quality, in workout environment, cleanliness, and quality of employees. It really is a great place, as is the rest of the community center. Now, I know at the present time, very tough budget decisions are being made, and all of city management and council are working toward reducing operating costs. Very frankly, I'm not sure where deliberations are on these specific items. However, there may be some on council who believe that cost reductions can best be achieved through privatization. Privatization of the operations of some city functions, as is presently being considered in the school district. I suspect there are also council members who would advocate such privatization and would say that the private business community is best equipped to manage these functions because of private sector experience. Now, tonight, I'm here really to make what militarily might be called a preemptive strike. I want to make a preemptive strike against such privatization of community center and fitness center functions. I also want to make a preemptive strike in favor of maintaining the present city-run structure. Now, while a government-run operation does not always guarantee the best results, we certainly have plenty of recent examples in the last eight years of the failure of government-sponsored privatization efforts. And without getting into specifics, let me just state, for example, things like the mismanagement of the military food services in Iraq through Halliburton, mismanagement of the Iraqi reconstruction effort, mistakes made by Blackwater, a private security firm in Iraq who has even had to change its name to Zee to emphasize the fact that they're changing the direction of their company. And most recently, the private United States financial institutional base run mostly without enough government oversight. The financial institutional base has experienced a crisis. We may even need to nationalize our banks, who knows? Now, I would not like to see the Troy Police Department privatized or outsourced to a company like, like Zee, formerly Blackwater. And by the same token, I would not like to see the community center functions outsourced. And I think in summary, we have a city jewel in the community center and the fitness center, just as our library is a city jewel. The community center and fitness center are a place where both residents and non-residents can meet and enjoy a variety of interactive, social activities. So, let's just keep it a Troy city-run, city-managed operation, and if we need operating efficiencies, and we certainly do, and we need cost reductions, I believe we can do it with the present structure. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, David. Marvin Reinhardt?
I'd like to start out by saying that I understand by Wikipedia, your role as councilpeople and the mayor, strictly ceremonial, and your committees recommend what your actions are, and that's why it's printed down on a piece of paper, and you can't invent your own stuff. So, when I seem critical, I'm not criticizing you people, because you people are only the result of the brains that bring forth what you have to vote on. And according to our own school system, they can't control their own education system. 1% raised, 222 families could be in jeopardy of their jobs. That's brainy. Second, I agree with this gentleman that that senior center is a money pit for some corporations that actually run businesses out of them rooms. But it's okay, because it's just another crooked operation running inside the city, inside the city offices. Two, since the Planning Commission and the DDA concentrates basically on 16 Mile, I took it upon myself to bring green into the city of Troy, and I missed the last week, if you noticed, but I dealt with over 60 different conservation people groups across the United States, Autobahn, Unlimited Ducks, Canada, Unlimited Ducks, asking how much pollution can our ducks take across the United States into other areas, and they're coming back with how much pollution that the city of Troy be allowed to transport all over the United States. And also, I have some corporations willing to put modern devices, little bit on the other side of Troy Union School and the other school, because if you build those condos, you're going to stop a water flow that flows underneath Troy Union, and as I, as a student there, know how much pollution's sitting on that playground unless you guys took it off, because quarter rain down at 18 and John R. is no longer there, and that's on the same drain. Okay? And then, second of all, I found out from the city that if I put a fish in Lake Sanctuary for one day, I can't eat it. So, that's my quest now, is to clean up Lake Sanctuary, because I notified Henry Ford in Providence that Beaumont is building something next to the Love Canal, a waste pit. Okay? So, I have talked to the senator offices just over there at Kirk someplace, which I visit on a daily basis, because I come over to your offices asking for water quality reports on all your water in this city. They said there isn't one. Then I found out your city manager is trying to once again escape Troy and go to a place I used to live for three to four years. I used to be very active in that area, just like I'm here. Those people know me real well, Elliot, and I gave them the great recommendation I gave them when I talked to the guys at Durbin. He can't do it twice to a city as bad as he does it here. That's what I told him. And I never sleep. So, you guys can worry about 16 Mile, you can worry about over there, but I got lawyers looking for air pollution, and Obama says, if I can smell you, I can sue you. And 16 Mile is set up for crossing just to rape Troy. Another thing I noticed, that in Crane's magazine today that came out... And as I, as a student there, know how much pollution is sitting on that playground unless you guys took it off, because quarter rain down at 18 and John R. is no longer there, and that's on the same drain. Okay? And then second of all, I found out from the city that if I put a fish in Lake Sanctuary for one day, I can't eat it. So that's my quest now, is to clean up Lake Sanctuary, because I notified Henry Ford in Providence that Beaumont is building something next to the Love Canal, a waste pit. Okay? So I have talked to the Senator offices just over there at Kirk someplace, which I visit on a daily basis, because I come over to your offices asking for water quality reports on all your water in this city. They said there isn't one. Then I found out your city manager is trying to once again escape Troy and go to a place I used to live for three to four years. I used to be very active in that area, just like I'm here. Those people know me real well, Elliot. And I gave them the great recommendation I gave them when I talked to the guys at Durbin. He can't do it twice to a city as bad as he does it here. That's what I told him. And I never sleep. So you guys can worry about 16 Mile, you can worry about over there, but I got lawyers looking for air pollution, and Obama says, if I can smell you, I can sue you. And 16 Mile is set up for crossing just to rape Troy. Another thing I noticed, that in Crane's Magazine today that came out, Birmingham says they're going to get $7 million to transport their Birmingham train station to the new and improved Birmingham Transit Center. That's what it said in Crane's. And I said, hmm, Varnyard's House could not be moved for over five or six years, and in one year, Birmingham could get $7 million to move their train station over on the Birmingham Transit site. That's in Crane's Magazine today. So that's how much Troy cared about the Varnyards. Okay? They waited till the lady died, then they changed the whole name of the operation to something else, and his house is not still moved, and Birmingham will probably move their train station faster. And that's how Troy treats his historical people. And I'll be like I said, every two weeks, I'm going to, I can't help it that you don't have brains in these commissions, okay? I haven't been around. So just, I got the rest of Troy covered. You guys just do your DDA thing. Have a good time.
Is there anyone else that is here on item that is not on the agenda? Then we'll continue on with our regular business. No one requested any, is there anyone here that's on a regular business item? Because we move those ahead of other items if someone is. Then we'll continue on at the regular business here. And appointments to boards and committees. We had the nomination last week of Lawrence Halsey. Mayor Potom Hauerlack?
I will.
I'll call on you for this.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move the resolution of Lawrence Halsey, or I should say the appointment of Lawrence Halsey to the Traffic Committee for a term expiring January 31, 2012.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Potom Hauerlack, seconded by Councilwoman Beltramey, that we approve the reappointment of Lawrence Halsey to the Traffic Committee for a term expiring January 31, 2012. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Palata?
Councilmember Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Howler?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is nominations to boards and committees. And for the Board of Review, I bring forward the name of Boris Potapenko. You all received a resume from him, and I did discuss with him the fact that we do the nominating this time. The vote would be on March 2nd. March 3rd is when the Board of Review would begin, and he can be there for all of those meetings. If council felt we needed to expedite it, we could move to suspend rules procedure and vote on him tonight, but I really don't think that's necessary, since he's been prepared to begin. He has spoken with Nino Licari. But if, you know, if council wishes to do otherwise, we could tonight. So I bring forward the name. Do we have a second?
Support.
Thank you. Moved by the Chair, seconded by Mayor Potom Hauerlack, that we forward the name of Boris Potapenko to the Board of Review for a term expiring January 31, 2012. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Palata?
Councilmember Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Howler?
Yes.
Cerven?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramey?
Yes.
Andrew Gable?
Yes.
Motion passes. And city council nominations. I'll call on Mayor Potom Hauerlack first, and then if anyone else has any to add. Mayor Potom Hauerlack?
I have two to say, Mayor. We have for the Liquor Advisory Committee for a term expiring January 31, 2010, Andrew Calzounas. And also for the Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees and Employees Healthcare Benefits Plan and Trust for a term expiring April 15, 2009, David Eisenbacher.
Moved by Mayor Potom Hauerlack, seconded by Councilwoman Beltramey, that we forward the names of Andrew Calzounas for the Liquor Advisory Committee for a term ending 2010, January 31, 2010. And for the, where is the other one here? Oh, I'm, thank you, pardon. For the Employing Retirement System Board of Trustees and Retiring Healthcare Benefits Plan, David Eisenbacher. Discussion? Does anyone else have any names to bring forward? Then could we have the vote on forwarding the names, Mrs. Palata?
Councilmember Lenny?
Yes.
Howler?
Yes.
Cerven?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramey?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Thank you. And then we'll have the vote on those appointments and reappointments on our next meeting, March 2nd. E3 is a bid waiver for Integrated Security Management System Expansion Project. Do we have a resolution? This is for Simplax Grinnell.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltramey?
I would move the resolution to waive the formal bidding procedures and authorize the contract with Simplax Grinnell as written.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltramey, seconded by Councilwoman Cerven, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Palata?
Councilmember Howler?
Yes.
Cerven?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramey?
Yes.
Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Howler?
Yes.
Cerven?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Howler?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And item E5 is SDD/SDM liquor violation hearings. We have one for this Wednesday, the 18th, but this is another, because we had to cancel the other meeting, and there are four choices, oh, no, five choices here. Would someone like to bring forward a motion? It's my personal preference that we not have them in connection with the council meeting because of the other types of business that we need to be dealing with on March 2nd and 23rd. We could call a special meeting on the Monday of the 9th or the 16th, where we have no city council meeting, but those are Mondays. And then there's the option to take no adverse action. I do understand from Mrs. Bloom that, is it for Wednesday's hearings, that no one is contesting them? Mrs. Bloom?
Mayor, actually, the ones that are to be rescheduled, several of those have already been resolved at the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. That's not the case for the ones this Wednesday, but hopefully, we will have some of those resolved as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
House Speaker, Beltramey?
If it is the will of council to have a separate meeting for these, I would request that it be the 9th of March rather than 16th, because I and whoever else go to Washington, DC, will be out of town.
Okay. Doesn't anyone have an objection to a meeting on the 9th? Put the schedule?
No. I would support, I would move the resolution, which would be B, proposal to reschedule SDD/SDM liquor violations at a special meeting on Monday, March 9, 2009.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltramey, Cerven, seconded by Councilwoman Beltramey, that we reschedule the SDD/SDM liquor violations at a special meeting on March, Monday, March 9, starting at 7:30 P.M. Discussion?
Mayor?
Mayor Potom Hauerlack?
I would prefer Resolution A, and will therefore offer a substitute resolution that the city council hereby reschedule seven liquor violation hearings for Monday, March 2nd, March 23rd.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Hauerlack, seconded by Councilwoman Beltramey, that we amend by proposing A to reschedule the hearings for seven on March 2nd and seven on March 23rd. Discussion? The amendment? Councilman Eisenbacher?
I'm curious if anyone has in their schedule right now that they will be missing March 2nd or March 23rd meetings?
No. I don't know what the agenda entails for those two nights, or if we have any exact session matters for those two nights. That's why I was concerned with having the liquor hearings on those nights, because usually those liquor hearings run long, even when, if they're not contested, there is the matter of presentation of information.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Cerven?
I agree. I would prefer the night, because experience shows that those hearings, and they do warrant our attention, they do warrant, but they are lengthy, and I think it would be a benefit to have an additional night.
Mayor?
Mayor Potom Hauerlack?
Actually, my recollection is this particular one lasting over two, one and two hours. I think I actually filled in for you last year, and I think about over within an hour and 15 to an hour and a half. And if we do this in two halves, we're looking at less than an hour. And we only have the next energy exemption on the next meeting's agenda, so I do believe, for public hearings, I do believe that this is the appropriate way to go.
We haven't seen the rest of the agenda yet, and Mrs. Bloom, would you clarify something for me? We split the liquor hearings into two nights because of the types of violations that there are. Is one more lengthy than the other?
Mayor, it's, it's really difficult to tell, and I don't offhand remember how many were on there last year, but generally, we've had enough to do two nights, and this year with 14 of them for the STDs and SDMs, we felt that that was appropriate to have on one night.
Okay. Further discussion? Councilwoman Beltramey?
If we're going to have these after a regular council meeting, I mean, at the end, so to speak, or would they be part of that council meeting and at the beginning as public hearings? And, and the reason I ask is, each of these companies comes with managers, staff, regional managers, and attorneys, all on the clock. And we typically also cost them a little extra money, and, and not that that's inappropriate, but I don't believe that we need to do something that appears to be gouging them. So I'm concerned about starting this hearing at 9 o'clock, and I, I believe that there were less than 10 both together a year ago. This, this is a lot of late. We haven't had this many in a long time. And I, I do believe that this is a meeting. So you're adding two hours, they're going to be here till 11 o'clock, even if we start at 9:00, and that's a lot.
Did you have a answer, Mrs. Bloom?
Yes. They're technically not public hearings. However, council could, if we choose to go that route, you could move them to the beginning of the agenda after the public hearings are scheduled. That would be something that could be done with the waiver of the, of the procedure. And, or another option for you is you could have them scheduled for a time certain, or after the meeting, have a special, you know, call them for a special meeting after this meeting, and maybe give them a timeframe when it would start.
Further discussion of the amendment?
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Councilwoman Cerven?
Another consideration is we have our own staff also that sits through, through these. It consumes a whole evening for them. And furthermore, it's quite possible, considering resolutions that are in yellow on the table, that we may be using the 2nd or the 23rd for an additional study session or to look forward on things. So again, I urge my colleagues to please consider putting aside Monday, March 9.
Further discussion? The motion on the table is to reschedule the hearings for seven of them on Monday, March 2nd, and seven on the 23rd. Vote, Mrs. Palata?
Mayor Shilling?
No.
Councilmember Beltramey?
No.
Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Howler?
Yes.
Cerven?
No.
Motion passes. Do you wish to have a resolution, Councilwoman Beltramey, that puts the hearings at the beginning of the meeting, or just?
Absolutely. Now, that does mean that our departmental staff is here until the middle of the night, where they would be allowed to go home. So it's up to you, but I do think it's a disservice to our business community to ask them to bring all of those folks in and not hear some of them till 10:30 or 11:00. So I would recommend that if we are going to do this, that they be placed at the beginning of the meeting immediately following public hearings.
Immediately, pardon?
Following public hearings.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltramey, seconded by Councilman Eisenbacher, that we like to waive our rules and procedure for the meeting, or just have the resolution?
This is an amendment, just so you know, we'll take one of them.
That we schedule the public hearings for immediately following public hearings on those dates of the 23rd. And then continue on with the rest of the meeting. Discussion? I am, because I was opposed to having them on the 2nd and the 23rd, I also would be opposed to this resolution for two reasons. First of all, even though it's going to cost the money of the people who are coming for the liquor violations, remember, they committed the error, we didn't. And we are required to have these hearings, and it is going to cost the taxpayers' money, because we'll have staff members that still have to be here, who wouldn't have to be here if we had it on a separate night, but they have to be here for the other items that they're here. And so here we are, putting the cost on to the, instead of on the folks that have committed the liquor violations, we've put the extra cost on to us. Further discussion? The vote, Mrs. Palata?
Councilmember Beltramey?
Yes.
Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Howler?
Yes.
Cerven?
No.
Motion passes. Councilman Eisenbacher?
For the main motion, I think one thing we're also not covering is, if Councilman Hauerlack were available on the 9th, I believe he'd be fine with that, but.
He didn't say.
Obviously, when he requests a meeting where he knows he'll be here, it's important for all of us to be available at the meeting. In spite of the fact that four of us, I believe it's four of us running, will do attend last Wednesday, it's better for us to have the full body present.
Further discussion? Mrs. Potapenko, any other vote?
You have a question?
Okay.
Quiet motion.
Councilmember Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Howler?
Yes.
Cerven?
No.
Mayor Shilling?
No.
And Councilmember Beltramey?
Yes.
Motion passes. E6 is Amendment to Chapter 60P's and Bonds Required?
Madam Mayor?
Uh, Councilwoman Bellamy?
Resolve that the Troy City Council hereby adopts an ordinance amendment to Chapter 60 of the Troy City Code, fees and bonds required, section 60.03 and 60.04, as prepared by city administration with an effective date of March 1, 2009, a copy of which shall be attached to the original amendments of this meeting.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Bellamy, seconded by Councilwoman Curran, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Palata?
Councilmember Isabacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howarack?
Yes.
Curran?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Belgiumini?
Yes.
Brumfield?
Yes.
Isabacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howarack?
Yes.
Curran?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
No. Motion passes. E7, amending the personal property tax abatement policy, uh, which is quite lengthy, uh, in detail, there's a two B. We have a resolution and we'll have a discussion and questions. Don't let us, will I have staff present something?
Madam Mayor?
Uh, Councilwoman Bellamy?
I would move the resolution as printed for the amendments to the policy.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Bellamy, seconded by Councilwoman Curran, that we approve the resolution as printed, amending the personal property tax abatement policy. Discussion?
Mayor.
Councilwoman Isabacher?
Um, besides my, my normal objections to tax abatements, which are your, all of my colleagues are aware of, I am concerned that this is making it more difficult for the small businesses within Troy to qualify. Um, I looked through it and what jumped out at me in reading the notes is that the, uh, the tax abatement that was approved for the screw company on, on Larchwood would not have qualified. And although that was not a big abatement, it was a big abatement for that company, um, percentage-wise, they added quite a bit to their staff with one person, but, and investment-wise, they added quite a bit to their overall investment in our community. So instead of it being an absolute number, and I know it would make it a lot more difficult, I'd suggest that we consider percentage increase as well as a raw number. Like, say you have a 10% increase in employees for a 10-person company, that's one person. If it's a 100-person company existing, that's 10 employees. So it's a, a substantial growth of the company as opposed to raw numbers coming into the city.
Uh, Mr. Nelson, would you like to react to that or have staff react to that suggestion? Uh, would they qualify in the investment of dollars, though? Uh, and what would that number of?
I'd request that Mr. Murphy address that particular.
Okay. Mr. Murphy?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, members of Congress. You're absolutely right, uh, Mr. Isabacher, these, the, the company that added one job and had about a half million dollar investment would not qualify for a personal property tax abatement for, uh, that single piece of equipment that they purchased. And part of the logic behind that is that actually the cost for us to manage that particular account and process through that and the length of the term in which they have that abatement is greater than the value of the abatement. The equipment itself actually expires before the abatement expires. So when we were taking a look at what was here, we were taking a look at the type of equipment that we were seeing, the type of investment that was being made into the community, and as well trying to strike a balance between exactly what you're talking about, and that is encouraging the existing companies that are here to reinvest in the community and not be penalized necessarily with a larger, uh, personal property tax burden, but as well to welcome new companies that have, uh, large growth, growth potential into our community as well and not necessarily, uh, strike them with the welcome stranger laws that sometimes work against us on, uh, personal property taxes. Um, there have been some changes in the Michigan Business Tax. There are some winners and some losers, and of course, that was something else that we took into consideration as we were trying to, uh, develop this, this matrix. It's not, uh, necessarily the best science, uh, there's, there's no doubt, uh, but the, the whole goal is to encourage, uh, investment in the community, uh, to, uh, encourage, uh, growth of jobs within our community and to reward those companies that make a long-term commitment to the city of Troy. And to us, those were the three goals that we thought were very important in developing the metrics for your consideration.
Further discussion? Anyone else have any questions? Do you, uh, to get, verify a point? I know you're opposed to the, but it, yeah. All right, uh, then we'll have a vote, uh, Mrs. Palata, on, um, the item, do we, uh, we don't need the resolution, um, read, uh, it's moved as printed?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Howarack?
No.
Curran?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Belgiumini?
Yes.
Brumfield?
Yes.
Isabacher?
No.
Curran?
No.
Mayor Shilling?
No.
Councilmember Belgiumini?
Yes.
Brumfield?
Yes.
Isabacher?
No.
Motion passes. And, uh, next is, uh, the proposed revenue enhancement and expenditure reductions. These are all of the, uh, items that we had many, many study sessions on, uh, came to consensus, uh, on the items and now they are delineated for us for, uh, a vote. A resolution and a vote.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Isabacher?
Before we move the resolution, I would like to maybe clarify something. At the end of our meeting, we were discussing back and forth between use of the Budget Stabilization Fund and a potential transfer from our capital millage amount. Um, I'd like to see a straw vote, or not even, maybe not even a straw vote, but maybe head fobbing before we make the resolution, because I'd strongly prefer a millage transfer as opposed to a one-time utilization of the Budget Stabilization Fund.
Uh, if I recall, the discussion went, that we were going to need the money in the construction funds for to offset, uh, things coming up with the refuse, uh, collection amounts, and there were some other things that were coming up. Uh, can you clarify that for me again, Mr. Nelson?
That was the general consensus, uh, at that time.
That we were going to need that?
Yes.
Next year, because remember next year, we're going to have problems with items. So they felt that the, uh, we really need to use, uh, $250,000 from the Budget Stabilization Fund this year because we need to use from those others next year. We'd have more problems to solve next year. And I thought that's the way the discussion ended up, if I recall. Any, feel free to jump in, anybody.
Mayor?
Uh, Mayor Tom Hauerlock?
Well, um, you know, I, I'm not the least bit in favor of, of transferring those funds and so, as printed, I couldn't support the resolution. It's, um, a deal breaker for me.
Was that your kind of the study session also?
I've been pretty consistent about use of, um, extra funds, that we need to balance the budget without using reserves.
Madam Mayor?
Uh, Councilwoman Curran?
Uh, I will move the resolution, uh, and then speak to it if there's support.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Curran, seconded by Councilwoman Bellamy, that we approve the resolution as printed, um, and Councilwoman Curran, you wish to be recognized again?
Yes, please. Um, there's certainly a lot in here. This was a consensus document that's just on the barely, I can live with it. There are items everywhere that I think some of us feel strongly about, gee, I, I really don't want it there. But the idea of consensus is everyone kind of holds their breath and works back and forth, and that's what we did at those budget sessions time after time after time. So I have objections with a number of these items. However, I'm willing to vote for it because I understand that that's how we're going to have to make sausage this time.
Um, I guess, uh, I agree with, uh, Councilwoman Curran that there were a number of items that each one of us expressed some concern about at the meeting, though we were trying to work through, um, budget difficulties that we had. Uh, as you know, I was, um, especially opposed to, um, having layoffs, more layoffs of city employees when we are down, uh, 50 employees from 2005. I asked, uh, it's higher than the 27 because if we go back to 2005, uh, we have been, uh, not replacing employees at, through attrition through the years. And I asked Peggy Clifton to check those numbers, uh, when I was questioned about it by, uh, the newspapers, uh, about staff, and I realized that many of these items that are on here are difficult and will impact some people, some more than others. But again, I caution, uh, folks that we've been already reminded that next year we're going to have, uh, even more difficult decisions to make. And so, uh, I know none of us likes to do those difficult things.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Fleming?
I was under the impression from our last discussion that we had to consider both to, to make the, our goal, utilizing $250,000 from the Budget Stabilization Fund. I think we talked about taking a little bit here, a little bit there. I was also under the impression that we were going to have to use capital funds as well. So I was expecting to use both, but maybe I misunderstood. I thought we were going to have to do both to make this happen, but apparently not. Are we confident that city management confident with these items here that we will not be needing capital funds in addition to this?
Move for?
I think we can say as close as possible, uh, with revenues coming in, if revenues hold, if we take in the, uh, the amount of projected revenues in a lot of these funds, uh, there's a very real shot that we'll, we'll break you. Plus the fact of, uh, expenditure totals for this year have been, uh, cut severely just to leave more money in the, uh, the general fund carryover. So hopefully with all of that, we can make the, the budget balance.
Further discussion?
Mayor?
Uh, Mayor Tom Hauerlock?
On the, um, on the agenda, and I'm just, so I don't have to count which bullet point this is, but on the very top of page 10, it says freeze positions through retirement incentives and layoffs. That sentence to me, or that, I guess it's a sentence, is a little bit confusing to me because I don't understand how you, how you, how you can freeze a position through retirement incentives and layoffs. It sounds somewhat contradictory to me, so perhaps, uh, we could have some clarification, perhaps even, um, better wording there.
Mr. Nelson?
We can certainly reword it. Basically, what it was is to freeze the number of staff positions that are available. Uh, some of the retirees are going to have to be replaced because they are critical or key positions, uh, but we weren't going to hire or replace some of the people who retired as well as some of the people who will be laid off. Maybe it's freeze staffing levels instead of positions.
Does it clarify to say freeze staffing levels?
No. Not really.
Or reducing.
I mean, I don't, I mean, I wouldn't expect that somebody would be laid off, then you go and hire somebody to replace them, that'd be kind of silly, but, um, I understand what you mean about the retirement incentives, um, but I guess I mostly those as, as, as separate because we know, kind of already gone through the, the retirement incentives and we've already approved that weeks ago. The layoff part, I'm still uncertain about where we're going with that, uh, but yeah, we should certainly clarify the language.
Uh, Councilwoman Curran?
I'm wondering if attrition through and just skip free staff positions, attrition through?
Or limit?
No?
Either one is more clear.
Pardon?
Either one is more clear.
Attrition achieved.
Uh, Councilwoman Bellamy?
Attrition achieved. Or limit, because you're not just dealing with attrition. Some of those people will be hired to be replaced.
Right. Um, Councilwoman Fleming, did I see you saying?
I like the idea of limit as well.
Limit staff?
Limit staff positions through retirement incentives and layoffs.
And that, that does sound like, is that powerful to everyone?
I'd make that amendment.
Support.
Uh, moved by Councilwoman Bellamy, seconded by Councilwoman Isabacher, that we amend by changing the wording from free staff positions through retirement incentives and layoffs to limit staff positions through retirement incentives and layoffs. Discussion of the amendment? We'll have a vote on the amendment then, Mrs. Palata, just on the amendment.
Councilmember Howarack?
Yes.
Curran?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Belgiumini?
Yes.
Brumfield?
Yes.
Isabacher?
Yes.
And Fleming?
Yes.
Amendment passes. Uh, we'll return to the main motion, uh, any other discussion of items? The motion is for, um, as printed?
Mayor?
With the amendment. Uh, Mayor Tom Hauerlock?
Uh, yes, I, um, am still uncomfortable with the, removing the $250,000 from the Budget Stabilization Fund and, um, in order to express my concerns, uh, I, I could, if you want, me to do an amendment to strike that sentence so we have further discussion. Um, failing that, I could simply vote against the resolution, but at, at the very least, what I'm going to do is, is amend the resolution to strike that last bullet point so that we can't have further discussions about it.
So your motion is to, um, strike the, uh, last, uh, point utilized approximately $250,000 from the Budget Stabilization Fund?
That would be my attempted amendment.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman, uh, Mayor Tom Hauerlock, seconded by Councilwoman Isabacher, that we amend the resolution by, um, striking the, utilized approximately $250,000 from the Budget Stabilization Fund. Discussion?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Brumfield?
Uh, question, if this, uh, uh, resolution passes and then we have discussion about that point, then would, then we would still vote on that point, is that correct?
Yes.
Or no? Because there has to be another resolution for that point?
Uh, that.
I, I, I think what I'm hearing from Councilman Hauerlock is he'd like to vote on the other issues if this isn't in there and he can, but then I think we all should still have an opportunity to vote on the one.
No, there would be a vote on the amendment as proposed. Then we would come back to a, uh, either an insertion of another item, uh, in there and then a vote on the entire resolution. The main, the main resolution, because just as we hear.
But the main resolution would not include that, that point then?
Depending on how the vote goes on the amendment.
Well, I understand, but then the point, I guess the question I, I'm asking is if that, if the amendment passes and then we vote on the amended resolution, so now if, if it passed, let's say it passed, everybody got a chance to vote on that without this point in it, do we come back and then vote on, can a resolution be put out to vote on, on the last item?
Where we do. We don't find towards.
No, what would happen is we'd have to amend the main motion. We wouldn't have a vote on the main motion until we resolve this because this is a major item in the entire resolution. We couldn't vote on it without having that taken care of because we wouldn't have a balanced budget without the $250,000 of the, taken from the Budget Stabilization Fund. But just, um, perhaps we need to repeat, uh, why this was left in and we didn't change it by taking it out of the construction budget. Uh, Mr. Nelson?
Uh, as you recall, that this money was used, or the possibility of using the $250,000 in the Budget Stabilization Fund was, uh, after it was explained that there is going to be a shortfall in cash carryover in the refuse and recycling fund, and you may want to, uh, utilize that, our transfer from, uh, capital construction to refuse and recycling to, uh, eliminate that deficit.
I was going to need $250,000 for, of that?
I don't know the exact total yet, but it's going to be over $100,000.
Okay. Hmm.
Mayor?
Mayor Potem Powerlag?
Yeah, just to clarify where I am on this, the, my concern, and we talked about this in the last study sessions, I'm very concerned about the budget that comes after this, which is two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven budget. And I want to have as much money saved up as possible to go into that, because I think we're going to go through money pretty quickly that year. My concern is that we need to work on reducing the general fund budget even more for the coming year, and not take the money out of the Budget Stabilization Fund. I think it's premature to do that. I'm very much in favor of having a balanced budget, all of our funds. And it's going to, and we need to do some work, very rightly so, on the Refuge Fund. So, and by the way, we still do need to be sure to maintain our roads through our capital projects funds as well. So my concern isn't so much that we need to move some money here and there, as I don't think that we're done yet. And I'd rather, you know, do some more work on the general fund budget than take it out of the Budget Stabilization Fund this coming year.
So, if I understand you correctly, you're suggesting that the $250,000 elimination from this item, from using the Budget Stabilization Fund not be replaced, that it be looked at as terms of taking things out of the general fund in the budget process?
Yeah, from what staff tells us, I'm quite certain we're going to need that money next year. And, you know, like somebody who knows the famine is coming, it's good to store up your food, because you're going to be eating it. I'd rather not eat it this year, I'd rather eat it next year.
The problem with that is that we had at least three budget study sessions, maybe more, where we looked at item after item after item to reduce the budget deficit. And I don't know if there are any more suggestions for reducing amounts that would come to $250,000, because the item that jumps out at me, that everyone wanted to leave in, was the $217,000 for the community service organizations, and we left that in there.
Madam Mayor?
I don't know if there is any large item that could be taken out, or for enough small items to come up to $250,000. Yes, Councilman Purman?
When we concluded our last study session, I urged that we have perhaps one more to look at this before we came to vote. And it was unanimous, sitting at the table, that everyone sitting there understood what was before us and could live with it. That's the consensus. That's what we said in that room, and now here we are at the table. $250,000 is a huge chunk of money. We, you know, we worked very hard to come with revenues, to try it this way, try it that way. How much could we, together at the table, figure out? And this was our best effort. I understand the concerns going forward, but this is what we have. We need to balance, and this is where we are. Certainly, the name Budget Stabilization Fund makes sense for stabilizing the budget.
In fact, that was the very purpose that this fund was set up for, years ago, was in case we ran into situations where we needed to do this. It was specifically set aside for that, and everyone spoke in favor of doing that. That was on council, I was not on council at the time when it was set up, but I do remember the discussion very succinctly. Further discussion of the amendment as proposed by Mayor Potem Powerlag, and seconded by Councilman Eisenbacher?
Mayor?
Councilman Eisenbacher?
Just one item, I'm just looking at the math. If we've got roughly a 60 million, just round numbers, a $60 million general fund budget, $250,000 is .4 percent. So when we're talking, this is a huge mon, huge amount of money. This huge amount of money is .4 percent of our budget, so...
It is, but if you divide it up into other places where we've specified money going for personnel, it comes out to be another hard hit. And I thought, as Councilman Purman indicated, that we had agreement, even though some of us were swallowing very hard on many of the items that are on here, but we understood the necessity for it, so. Anyone else wish to speak on this? Councilman Bellman?
I have a question for Mr. Nelson, if I might.
Yes.
Did I hear you just say that with the general fund carryover for next year, from this year to next year, and I know you're looking at other methods, some voluntary methods and the like, that you're looking at at least $100,000, but in essence, you want the authorization to take up to a quarter of a million from Budget Stabilization? Did I hear that right?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Because what I, in answer to someone's question, I thought you said, I don't know if it'll be 250, but it'll be more than 100 for sure.
That's the transfer to stabilize the Refuge and Recycling Fund.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Because we don't have all those numbers in here. Further discussion, Councilman Brumfield?
A question for Mr. Nelson, maybe you don't know the exact figures right off your head, but as a review, and my own memory is foggy, how much, how much should we have to take out of our undesignated fund in the prior budget year? Just to balance our budget, do you recall?
It was about $4.2 million.
That we took out of our undesignated fund?
Right.
Year prior? And then two years prior, do you recall? We'll go back a bit.
It's probably in the $3 million range, three, four million.
How much are we taking out on this budget?
None.
Further, further discussion? Who's next? Mayor Potem Powerlag?
Yeah, actually, is that on a budgetary or an actual capital basis that you're talking about? It's my understanding that you're giving me budgetary numbers, and our financial reporting numbers came in below those for reduction in undesignated unreserved funds?
Yes, that was budget numbers.
Okay. So that, that, we didn't use nearly that much of undesignated unreserved funds, because we've been maintaining them. As a matter of fact, this year, we're going to come in substantially below what we had budgeted, in my understanding.
Right.
Yeah.
Further discussion? The vote on the amendment, do you need it reviewed again? It's a removal of the last bullet point? Mrs. Plon, the vote?
Councilmember Purman?
No.
Mayor Shilling?
No.
Councilmember Bellman?
No.
Councilmember Brumfield?
No.
Council, Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Plon?
No.
And Powerlag?
Yes.
Motion fails. The next thing for us to deal with, if there are no other changes, is on the main motion. Am I correct, Mrs. Plon? Further discussion before we have a vote on the main motion? Okay, Mrs. Plon, the vote on the motion on the proposed revenue enhancement and expenditure reduction, as printed, with the change in the item about the limit of staff positions.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Bellman?
Yes.
Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Difficult, yes.
Plon?
Yes.
Powerlag?
No.
And Purman?
Difficult, yes.
Motion passes. I know that was not easy for any of us, for a variety of reasons. We don't always get to choose what we have difficult tasks, but we're all up to it. Do you folks need a break before we go to consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Bellman?
Madam Mayor, it seems to me we have a regular item that needs to be added to the...
Yes, we do. So can we take a break before we do that?
It's fine with me, but that would be before the consent agenda, that was...
Right, yeah. I just happened to think of that, just after you said the sentence. Okay, thank you. All right. We're in, give me 10 minutes? Okay.
Okay, just before the meeting concluded, we were reminded that before we go to consent agenda, we have one more regular business item to come up before we go to consent.
We need to suspend our rules, border.
Do you have a business item?
Mrs. Palata, if we want to add a business item, we could suspend our rules to add an item at this time, so I move to suspend the rules at this time.
Support.
Moved by the Chair, seconded by Councilman Eisenbacher that we suspend the rules at this time. Discussion, your vote, Mrs. Palata?
I'm going to go with that's me.
To suspend the rules.
Yeah, all right, fine.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion, Kansas? Councilman Dr. Mignan?
Well, the way you worded that, to add an item, and my thought is that we'll be adding more than one.
No, well then, when I read the resolution, I just said to suspend the rules, I didn't say why.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Because I caught myself.
You're good.
What's the next item? I know, we have one to tend to first. It's delineated on the memo that is in front of us.
Mayor.
Councilman Eisenbacher.
I was thinking along the lines of following our next meeting, March 2nd, in terms of timeframe.
Yeah, but the first thing we have to do is accept the...
Right.
But you're talking about the effective.
Effective, because we have two options.
Oh, the effective, oh, okay. And why did you want to do it to the second?
Just so that it's, our next meeting is covered.
No, I don't... Mrs. Blom, can we do that?
Mayor, yes, you can, the contract does require the 30 days written notice, you certainly can waive that. I believe that Mr. Nelson would be amenable to staying over as well, so if you were to do that, you might say something about March 2nd at 11:59 p.m.
That's along the lines of what I was thinking.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may?
All right, go ahead. Councilman Eisenbacher?
Resolved that Troy City Council hereby accepts the resignation of City Manager Philip L. Nelson, effective Monday, March 2nd, 2009, at 11:59 p.m. Support.
Moved by Councilman Eisenbacher, seconded by Councilman Fleming, that the Troy City Council hereby accepts the resignation of City Manager Philip L. Nelson, effective Monday, March 2nd, 11:59 p.m.
Mayor. Yes, Doc. Just one thought that I had after saying that we should make it 11:59. It is possible with the number of items that the meeting will not be concluded by 11:59. I don't know, but that is a possibility, so council should be mindful of that as well.
Could we say conclusion of the meeting?
You could amend it to have that.
Do we have to have a date certain? Or just say the end of the meeting, the March 2nd?
That would probably, that should be sufficient, that the conclusion of the meeting is starting on March 2nd at 7:30 p.m.
Okay. Want to do the amendment?
Yes. Move to amend the time to say following the 7:30 p.m.
No, conclusion of the...
At the conclusion of the 7:30 p.m. city council meeting.
Of March 2nd.
Of March 2nd, yes.
Do we have a second?
Support, sir.
Moved by Councilman Eisenbacher, seconded by Councilman Fleming, that we amend the motion by adding that, to the conclusion of the March 2nd council meeting.
Mayor.
In the wording, instead of March 2nd, 11:59 p.m. Discussion of motion, Mayor Protem Harlock?
Yes, after discussions with the city manager, I've decided that we're not be voting in favor of accepting his resolution and his resignation, and if council is so inclined to move in that direction, I would strongly encourage council to wait until after the budgetary process has been completed.
So what you're saying tonight is that the resignation would not be necessary at this point?
Not for me it isn't, so I, you know, I think this is premature.
Okay.
Madam Ms.
Councilwoman Brumfield, Councilwoman Dr. Mignan, and then I was expecting you to jump in, Councilwoman Brumfield. Councilwoman Dr. Mignan?
I lean more with the Mayor Protem on this issue. I believe that if we took this to be a full 30-day notice, then we would have 30 days to do the prep work that we need to do to replace him, and the budget process would be much further along. We get our budgets in April, so it would be down to the cutting and pasting stage that staff could do, I think, better. So I would favor a March 15th date, but that's my own preference.
Well, I believe that, Mayor Protem Harlock speak for himself, you were saying if the resolution...
Oh, he wants much longer.
What date were you thinking of, Mayor Protem Harlock?
Well, to be honest with you, after discussing with the city manager, I'm not even prepared to take action on this tonight.
We could ask him to withdraw his resignation letter.
We have a lot of options, Mayor.
Yes, I know, I know, I'm just mentioning the options that are available to us here. I know that he is present in the building, didn't want to be here for the discussion, but he's in the other room, so we'd be happy to retrieve him from that and ask him to withdraw his letter, and then he can go through the budgetary process and then go from there, see what his desires are at that point.
Mayor.
Yes, Mayor Protem Harlock?
One of the things we can do is we can stick a date in there that's sufficiently far enough in the future so that the rest of these items don't have to be addressed, and if it is council's desire to meet with the city manager in some sort of a evaluation process, if you will, it may be such that after that time, we decide to rescind this resolution, but what I would do is, you know, at least move it to the end of March, it gives you that flexibility, or even end of April, if you will, but I think that, I just have, I have a lot of concerns that are not addressed yet, and I met with the city manager today, I think that I'd like to meet with him again, but what is council's desire, I'm not sure.
Well, my preference would be to ask him to withdraw his letter of resignation, and then we go through the budget process, and we also ask him to request a session, he can request an executive closed session to discuss his contact, am I correct, Mrs. Blom?
He can have a performance evaluation in a closed session if he requests it.
Right, okay, and then we talk to him about doing that, and then we can have some opportunities, then we can come forward with a resolution at some point if we need to do one. Is that council's desire? Anybody else want to speak on this? Councilwoman Fleming?
I'm just puzzled, really, because I don't have the benefit of this private conversation that's been so transformative. I, in light of that, however, I would suggest we take no action on this item at all, and that way we don't have to follow through with the As and the Bs and the Cs and everything else, if that's the inclination. I wish, however, that I would have been the beneficiary of whatever conversations Mayor Protem has had, perhaps some of that might be shared.
Well, I think there might be an appropriate venue for that. I appreciate everyone being candid about this. I didn't mean that we had to take a formal action to ask him to rescind his letter, I think if you just asked me to do that, I can do that on behalf of council, or if we just take no action at this time, and then I just have a conversation with them, or we all have a conversation with them, we can do that at that time. Does that meet the standard of the law, Mrs. Blom? That we take no action at this time?
Yeah, there's no requirement to take any action, if that's the direction of majority of council, then certainly with the appropriate merit for you to talk to him and see if he is willing to rescind his letter.
Are you folks desirous of having a closed session tonight at Mr. Nelson's request or not?
Mayor, it could not happen tonight.
Okay.
Mayor.
Thank you. Well, I think it was Councilman Eisenbacher first, and then I'll come to you. Councilman Eisenbacher?
I would also like to get more knowledge, like Councilwoman Corwin said, I'd like to get a better understanding of the knowledge that Mayor Protem Harlock has gained. I don't want to take any action either for or against this evening, I don't want to say that we are rescinding the letter of resignation, or if there's not the intent of this council to accept it, I think we need to get the knowledge, all of us, not just, not necessarily taking action either way, that doesn't mean rescind the letter or accept it. Our next meeting is before, I mean, the question would be, when is the expiration of the letter legally?
Mrs. Blom? Right now, the city manager has turned in a letter of resignation that is effective as of February 27th, unless some action is taken by the city manager to rescind that, or by city council to enforce that for 30 days, then that will become what happens. I mean, there does need to be some affirmative action taken by either the city manager or city council to require the performance of that 30-day notification.
Mayor Protem Harlock? I believe you asked for a floor next, but then I see other people, so go ahead.
I just wanted to ask the city attorney, what would happen if there was a date set that's say, for example, March 30th, for the, you know, this resolution says Monday, March 2nd right now, what if it said Monday, March 30th, and if it became apparent that the city council and the city manager wanted to continue with him as the city manager, could that resolution just be, basically, you would have a vote, and you would rescind that motion, is that a possibility as well? Because until that date comes...
Mrs. Blom? Yes, there could be a reconsideration of your motion, which would be in accordance with your rules, but again, the time limits would be, it'd have to be done before the date of the resignation, or the date, you know, that would be in your new resolution. So yes, you could do it that way, you could also, you know, someone could meet with the manager and see if he's willing to extend it or to modify his middle.
I think the next person asked for the floor was Councilwoman Dr. Mignan, Councilwoman Brumfield, which one, I don't know, I was looking both ways.
I think Christine.
This is the spoken member.
Pardon? Councilwoman Brumfield?
Well, I think, number one, if we're going to not accept our city manager's resignation, we need to be some sort of a date certain where we will review it, and that review would need to be within a very short amount of time, because frankly, I think we're coasting. I think that it is not a good thing to have a resignation hanging out there, or even a potential thought of a resignation, because it sends messages to our staff, our management, our staff, what's going on? And it's a very uncertain time, so, you know, here we have, the manager has submitted a letter of resignation, I'm hearing from council members that, you know what, maybe before we accept it, I think we'd like to sit down in closed session, do another evaluation and talk, and see if we can resolve whatever reason why you're leaving, or you feel like you need to leave, and, but that has to be real soon.
Well, okay, yes, I'm sorry.
Because the point here is this, that to have a leader in management of a city, and it's iffy, and we don't know what's happening, we're already having a lot of uncertainty, and this council needs to grab the bull by the horn and make some choices here, and if we're having some problems in our communication, the city manager needs to take place in the next couple of weeks, we need to do an evaluation, and then we need to either accept it or reject it. But I'm not in favor of just having it out there for a couple of months to see how things might go, because that's going to be detrimental to our city management.
One of the reasons why I didn't want to have a... One of the reasons why I didn't want to have a liquor hearing meetings on a council meeting is that I anticipated we would have something that we needed to deal with, not knowing what something we'd have to deal with, at one of our next meetings. And so, but I do appreciate the fact that if council members can't be there on the night that we went with the dates, and so I'm willing to do that. However, I do think that this matter takes precedence, even over liquor hearings. It's our major job. And the budget, yes. Councilwoman Beltrame, were you next, or was it Councilwoman Corwin?
I believe that I was.
Okay.
It appears to me that the majority of council is unprepared to accept this resignation as written. And therefore, I agree with the city attorney that take no action tonight. However, you know, it's noncompliant with the contract as written. So I don't want to get into that. Now, I agree with Christina that this can't just be sitting out there in the wind forever. We have a meeting Wednesday night. Is there some way that this item could be added on to the end of the agenda Wednesday night to either accept, put a date certain, have Phil ask for a review? Certainly between now and Wednesday, Mayor, you and the manager can sit and have a meeting. And then we could actually take some action at the earliest opportunity, because I do believe we need to show some decision-making power in this. So can we do that? Do we need the timeframe standard?
Yes.
Yeah, just for clarification, you want the proposed resolutions, all of them, to appear, or are you looking for a personnel evaluation to occur in a closed session, provided that the city manager requests that?
My thought is, we have a motion on the floor. We also would have the opportunity at that meeting to call for a closed session for an evaluation, if that's what the city manager wanted. And we could tweak this motion based on whatever the conversation the mayor had, either to a different date certain, or as is, or back to the 27th, or we could use that. I just want this item, in some fashion, on that agenda so that we can act. Either through closed session, or through acceptance or rejection of the resignation letter.
Madam?
Yes, Councilwoman Corwin, are you next?
I think so. I, too, would like to see this, something happened Wednesday night. But what I think is, should the manager request a review in closed session, I think that would be an opportunity to perhaps hear some of the same things that Mayor Protam has as a body, and offer some review at the same time. Then I would suggest that one of these resolutions might make their way into the meeting, the March meetings. And at this time, again, taking no action on those on the table, not seeing those on the table, but offering item after all the liquor hearings, should the manager request a closed session to discuss a review, a performance review, then that makes sense to me.
Councilwoman McFarlane?
Madam, I agree. We can't let this drag out. Once someone's given their resignation, I agree, it's a powerful message to the staff. We need to deal with this this week, and come to a conclusion as to what we're going to do with the date certain, this week and move forward.
I have a suggestion, and that is for, before we go to the consent items on the agenda, that I be excused from the meeting to tend to the matter, and Mayor Protam Harlock can conduct the next part of the meeting, then I could return with some information that would expedite. I think that's better. I don't want to ask a staff person to do this. I think it's our responsibility. Okay? Would that be satisfactory? Okay, so at this point, we continue, oh, excuse me, Mayor Protam Harlock?
I just wanted to offer one other option, and that is that we could change the date here to March 30th, postpone the item to the 2nd, and have an evaluation of the city manager before the meeting on the 2nd, call a special meeting about 6 o'clock, and figure out what we're going to do.
I think we need to have our discussion with him before we take any action. I'm not privy to the information that has occurred. Now, and I'm not saying that it should be. I'm just saying, that's my personal opinion on this matter at this point.
Fair.
Yes.
Just for the record, Mayor, you know, the city manager's door is open. I simply emailed him this morning and asked him if he would be in today.
Right.
And then I walked into his office. And I think we certainly all have the ability to do that. I'm not necessarily so sure that I asked any questions that were more or less probing than anybody else here on council, just if some information had been conveyed, anyway, and so forth.
All right.
Madam?
Yes, Councilwoman Brimfield?
Before you go talk to our city manager, I just wanted to make sure, the idea or the suggestion would be to tag on a closed session evaluation at the end, because I do teach Wednesday nights, but I can make it here by 8:30, 9:00.
Okay. All right. Is that fine? So, Mayor Protam Harlock, you want to take over for the consent item?
I can do that.
You know, be excused, I shall return.
Well, I mean, we've got a resolution hanging on the table that we need to do something with, so we can either-
Take no action. No action.
Even on the resolution?
Yes.
Because the resolution, you've got a resolution, I mean, there's actually an active resolution on the table.
Take no action.
I think- Yeah, and I think there's something else that you can just call to, what is it, to table indefinitely, and then you can lay it on a table to bring it back, but anyway, if everybody's happy with this, I just thought that we had a resolution that was on the table, we discussed it, and it had to be acted on somehow.
Take no action.
Okay, very good. So I guess we're going to move to the consent agenda, and I guess I'll sit in her chair because I can't see who's signed up.
Mayor, I would move to approve.
Support.
How's this thing work?
Nobody's signed up.
Nobody's signed up. Okay, so Councilwoman Beltrame has made the motion, and Councilwoman McFarlane has seconded it. I wanted to pull an item myself, I don't know if anybody else does.
There are corrected minutes on the table, too.
Corrected minutes on the table, F, circle it. Bear with me. Here it is. F4E, I'm going to pull on F4E. I don't know if anybody else has any other items. Okay, so we've got a resolution to pass all items on the consent agenda except for item F4E. Question, please?
Councilmember Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Harlock?
Yes.
Corwin?
Yes.
Mayor Sterling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrame?
Yes.
All right, F4E is the pathways master plan, if I'm not mistaken. And my concern with this was, I wanted to hold off until we got a little further into the budgeting process, because I'm concerned about having a master plan and not being able to carry it out. That's really what my concern is. And so I wasn't, unfortunately, a lot of work has already been done on this, and I hate to actually kill it, I just want to hold off until we have a better idea of how we're going to actually fund this. That's where my concern is. I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts. I'm sorry. Who wants to speak on this?
Well, I looked at this as well, and it's my thought that this is coming out of this year's budget, and it is funded in this year's budget. And while I don't want to have a plan that does nothing sitting on the shelf, I believe that much of what is done along this line now and over the next five years will be in grant funding and the like. And we have over a million and a half in the account saved to be leveraged through those grant funds, but we don't even have access to them without a master plan. So I'm afraid that without a master plan, everything just gets more expensive, and that money sits on the shelf and doesn't make near the interest that the expenses escalate by. So I, while I had second thoughts, I was like, well, the money's there this year, and there is some seed money. Let's see what we can get done by prioritizing the paths.
Further discussion? Councilwoman Piesbacher?
I also think that with the pathways, even if we have a slow implementation, it's possible to be implemented in a limited scope because of the fact that it's a wide-open palette right now. And like our sidewalk gap fill-in, a lot of the gaps we're going in are small. A lot of the pieces to get a pathway going are potentially small. So even if we weren't able to take a huge chunk out of it every year, we can get pieces of it going like the last plan we approved, preliminary plan that potentially has a path going.
And then, of course, we're all hopeful that someday soon, economic conditions are going to turn around, we'll be able to move forward with some of the things that we have tried to do. Doesn't mean we're going to not do anything at all, it just means that some of the things have been slowed down a bit with this economy, et cetera, and- Councilwoman McFarlane, do I see you saying one?
Yes, it's my understanding, my correct, this is coming out of the park development capital account.
Is that correct, Mr. Nash?
Did I read that correctly?
That is correct. Funds are in place, and some of our other grant projects, particularly the road projects, it has been very much to our advantage to have the plans on the shelf, ready to go when the funding is available.
With that understanding, I can support it, too. We've got a group of citizens doing a lot of work on this. And it doesn't mean we have to react to it right away, but having the plan in hand, I think is a huge advantage, whatever leveraging we might be able to obtain in the future.
Yes, because we don't know what specific, this is one of the things that we may look at, get money, whether grant money or stimulus money. It is for the environment as well, it's for the health and exercise of people. I think it's Councilwoman Brimfield next.
A question from Ms. Anderson. I know you. You sit down, we're ready to get up. I guess the question I have is, given the economy and all of this, if a master plan is done like this, and it sets on the shelf, and it's ready to go, and we're ready to go, and maybe we take it slower, maybe it's a foolish question, but I always say the foolish question's not asked, we should ask all questions. Does it ever get outdated? I mean, with the economy and our pulling back of development in the next few years, probably kind of more maintaining and little to no development, and this thing's going to be sitting there?
Certainly, there are some things that could involve the city, that starts with development and so on, that would make it necessary to adjust the plan. But I believe that it is important, other plans, to start any implementation at all. I really, without getting a plan done, I have this, and so we have speaking in the court for the horse type thing, but I think if we don't have a plan, we can't make any progress in this at all. And while progress may be slower than it should be, it might have been applied to years ago.
I think it is very likely that we can make some progress, although it might be smaller. Thank you.
I thought it was my ears again, Mrs. Anderson. I get the voices mixed up up here sometimes because of the background.
I talk often, just not loud.
Okay, Councilwoman Corwin?
I echo my colleagues, particularly Councilmember Fleming, who really did point out how many people have become involved in this. I wanted to ask you, Mrs. Anderson, out of all of your committees, have you ever seen this kind of number, or this kind of dedication planning from the private sector, as you have on initiative?
I have not been involved in any group that, whose passion and commitment has stayed as consistent over what is now two years. I think that along with all the other, or the other reports and indications that we have that this is something that's important in our community, I think there, that we all are looking for a plan and a hope, and progress in this, in this project. And I do think that while overall, the project in its entirety is massive, and is a probably 20-year project in good times, I think that there are pieces that can be done, hopeful in the potential vendors here, but there, I think that, that there are things that could be done in small pieces to make, make an effort, and so that we all see some progress in this.
The plan itself is a policy statement, isn't it, of where we would like to be in the future?
Yeah, the plan itself is not only a policy statement, but it will be, will have some definitive plans and routes and so on, and also, the plan will allow us to check our progress. That's part of the bits, backs, or the proposals, is that there are some checks, checks and balances, I guess you might say.
And I think it fits so well, we have our outcome statements, it fits so well with enhancing the health and safety of the community and then adding value, because we have found, and that was pointed out so well in the slide presentation by former council member Tom Koschewski the other night, on how it adds value to not only the properties, upgrades our infrastructure, but also our quality of life.
I think, too, it is important to realize that this is not just a recreational plan, that this is moving people through the city in a way that is, I mean, we're hoping that this will allow people to be moved through the city without being in a car.
And this group, actually, those that are involved in this committee, is a spin-off from the futures study groups, where we had very passionate people work on various aspects of the community together, and this was actually accomplishing something that was suggested at that point. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah. Along with the Parks and Recreation Survey, and lots of other places. And I do think that there is an understanding by the Trails Committee, and certainly by the staff in the Parks and Recreation Department and so on, that the capital funding is not going to be at a level that will allow us to do this in a very quick fashion. And I think that's okay. I mean, I wish it was faster, but the economy being what it is, that this is going to take a long time to achieve. But there are steps that can be done before it's completed.
Is there a resolution on the floor for this, or is this something that was exempted? Or what?
Madam, I would-
Councilwoman Beltrame?
I would move to approve the contract for the Parks and Recreation Trails Plan as written. Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrame, seconded by Councilwoman Corwin, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion?
Mayor?
Right there. Mayor Protam Harlock?
Yeah, I know I'm not going to score any points for this, but I really do have concerns because I, at this point, with moving forward with this, only because we don't have a plan of how we're going to fund this. And trust me, there are a lot of good things that are in our budgets, but we don't have money for all of them. So the question that I have is, is this, is this more important than, you know, X, Y, and Z? We haven't had that discussion yet. And we, yes, we have-
And we, yes, we have basically a reserve, but the question is, do we want to keep that there? You know, we are just kind of fumbling through this upcoming budget year, and the one after that we know is going to be substantially worse. I am apprehensive about, because I've seen so many plans that have been drafted, approved, and put on shelves, and we even had the Civic Center Priority Task Force drop a plan, and everything that's happened on the Civic Center site, in particular with what's going on near Liverloin Road, is very much in contradiction to that plan, and yet that task force has yet to be called back. I have concerns about that, and of course, we can discuss that later, because I see. So, but I know for a fact that what has happened in the northeast corner of the Civic Center site is in contradiction of the plan that was adopted. And, you know, if, I know that in this city, that if you draft a plan and it doesn't move forward quickly, you have the risk that somebody else is going to come along and tinker with it, and therefore, your efforts and time and money have been wasted. That's why I'm not in favor of this resolution right now, unless somebody can say we are definitely going to fund this next year or the year after. Mayor?
I need to ask Mrs. Anderson in regard to the Civic Center site. I remember there was like a picnic area that was asked for, isn't that what, is that what you're speaking of, that area where they filled it and leveled it so they could? Mrs. Anderson?
I'm assuming you're talking about the enhanced gardens area. And the task force that was done for the Civic Center did have an enhanced gardens My recollection of the Civic Center Task Force plan was that although there were some, some things that were identified as possible locations, that there weren't any definitive locations for each of the items in the plan. So that is, the enhanced gardens is actually a part of the plan, so unless I'm misunderstanding.
Yes, Councilwoman Kirwin?
To the issue before us, just another question. Without a master plan in place, we can't attract no matching funds. Is that true?
I would not say that, I don't know all the funding possibilities out there, but certainly for the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund grants, we would have to have a plan, and would have to have a match of some, some portion. There may be some grants out there that would be available without a match, but not without a plan. I don't know that anybody would give them.
Okay, yes, Councilwoman Brumfield?
To piggyback that question, do you have plans in place, not a master plan, but plans in place to go after those matching funds? I mean, it's one thing to say, we're putting the money in here, or we're making these master plans so that we can go get money. Do you have a comprehensive plan in place to go get that, or apply for those grants once you get this in place?
Yes, it would be our, it would be our goal, once the plan is in place, certainly the biggest, biggest pot for funding of this sort, that I'm aware of, those Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund grants. And those are typically on an April and August cycle, with August usually being acquisition only, I believe, so, you know, April is the April 1 deadline. We would not make it for this year, of course, but yes, we would absolutely, that's the same funding source that, that we got nearly a half a million dollars for the nature center building.
So you've been through it before?
We have.
Okay.
That is not to guarantee anything.
I know that.
I don't want to guarantee anything, but certainly, and I do want to say that Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund requires a Parks and Rec Master Plan, which we have. However, this would be in addition to the Michigan, or the Parks and Rec Master Plan, although it wouldn't be a requirement, certainly they wouldn't fund anything without a plan.
Okay, further discussion? I do think that, I'd like to see us do the plan, just because I think it's in our future to have this, but I also would like to indicate that I agree that Rep. Potomac-Harlan has indicated, and I agree, that we, when we have our discussions about prioritizing things, et cetera, and looking at budgetary constraints over the next few years, we're going to have to do some prioritization. So I think that's a good reminder of that to all of us. But I think having a plan does help us, so that if we're able to gain funds to do at least a portion, because we are always looking at the future, even though the future isn't coming as quick as we'd like it on some things. All right, so are you ready for a vote? Okay, Mrs. Plata, the vote on this item?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Harlan?
No.
Kirwin?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beldrini?
Yes.
Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Motion passes. Were there any other exempted items? Okay. Do you want me to report back?
Please.
My duties here at this point, because we're on council referrals, or comments, or whatever. The city manager is requesting that we have placed on the agenda for the next, the Wednesday meeting, a evaluation, performance evaluation time, Mrs. Bloom, so can you see that that is added on there?
Yes, Mayor.
You need a resolution?
It would be helpful to have a resolution setting that as an item, and also, we would need to, before you can have it in closed session, he would need to request it in writing.
Yes, I indicated that he needs to put it in writing, but I'm reporting it back to the best it's said, so. Someone wants to move a resolution, and then we'll also get it in writing? You need it in writing before we have the resolution, Mrs. Bloom?
It's just on the agenda if he puts it in writing.
Yeah, it.
So you don't need, we don't need a resolution if he puts it in writing?
We can go on Wednesday's agenda.
I believe, can we add this? We can do this administratively.
Okay. Is that correct, Mrs. Plata? Thank you. Councilwoman Brumfield?
Could I request that the time start of the session be set, in the event that the meeting gets over much quicker, not that it will, but you never know, because I cannot make it here before minimal 8:30?
Oh, I, yeah, I don't, no. Did you?
Well, you never know.
The list was quite lengthy, I think, just calling them all up. They have to just present, you know, for each one, they have to present the name, even if they don't contest anything. Am I correct, Mrs. Bloom?
I do believe that it will take some time. It is also appropriate for council to take a break if necessary as well.
Right, okay. Council comments on items that they wish to bring up, things that occurred? Councilwoman Kirwin?
I would appreciate a couple reports. One, a monthly report, perhaps, on the transit center and where we are, any efforts, dates, times, milestones. Assistant Manager Murphy, that would be helpful. The other thing I noticed in reading the Planning Commission minutes, in terms of ordinance review, I believe that that is on the way, but I'd like to know when. We can expect new revised ordinances before us, particularly the ordinance dealing with the requirement for trees, landscaping, and so forth, that we had talked about. So if I could, I would appreciate reports, it could be simply included in, as an FYI or something, reports on each of those items ongoing. One more thing? Madam Mayor, I noticed in some correspondence in here, the suggestion that we go to electronic rather than delivered packets. One issue had to do with, what about the mail? Frankly, I would really appreciate if my mail was opened and an electronic copy sent, because many a time, I've received an invitation or something, three weeks after the fact. They think they're doing the right thing by sending it right here, but if we don't meet, it is insulting to people to think what, they don't care or respond. So I think it would be a better system to have the mail opened and electronic sent as it is, as it is received.
I have no problem receiving it electronically either, unless, of course, as some of us periodically have problems with our email, with our computers, or whatever, as I had a slight problem, nothing big, recently, and so people thought I was getting something, and it wasn't until I spoke to someone, they said, "Did you get this?" And I said, "No." And so, but I think that the cost saving there, you know, we're looking at the cost saving, plus time for staff, et cetera, that's something that we need to look at. I do want to tell you that I did receive an invitation, and did attend today at Congress from Gary Peters' office, where he had regular folks from out in the communities, not only Troy, but all of his communities, come and tell their stories, or their questions about the stimulus plan, and how it would affect them, et cetera. And it was very interesting to sit there and listen. I was the only mayor that did attend, and there was one interim school superintendent from Pontiac that did attend, and the other people were there as working folks or non-working folks that had been laid off. And the media did cover it. There is another meeting that I'm attending in Rochester Hills on Wednesday afternoon to learn a little bit more. And my question was, of course, about the timing of the monies, and I think I misspoke, I mentioned it to Councilwoman Kirwin, but I think I misspoke. I think the timing is even faster than what I said to you. The important thing they want to get right away is the unemployment insurance out, and the increase in the benefits to those that are unemployed, but then to also roll out the stimulus money to get projects moving along. So I think there's going to be a lot of information out on this. I was just clarifying that I was asked to go. I know we have projects that we've submitted, and I sent some forms over to the manager, and the two assistant managers, forms that the federal government requires, might be a different format. Remember, we had that good report from Mr. Murphy on projects, you know, could be involved, so I did send that over there to them. And anything we can do, because, you know, everybody's asking for their information, but it should be things, I think that I expressed for all of the council, the main thing we're concerned about is the people and their jobs, or their family situations because of being laid off, or because of house burglaries. That was our main concern. And then, projects that we could do, or, of course, revenue sharing money that we could have, and to better help with things that we want to do. But our main concern was individuals. And so I expressed that on behalf of the council for all of you. Anybody else have council commentations? Councilwoman Beldrini?
Madam Mayor, I have, in addition to congratulations to the police department, I was tickled to see Wendell Moore's report, and how well we have done over the last 10 years, and there's good reason why we're the safest. You guys do a great job, and thank you. I have comments on some things that were on the agenda today. We gave Wayne Wright a certificate for service to the Planning Commission, and I served four years there with him. And the one thing about the Planning Commission is they are different than we are. They make many of the same kinds of difficult decisions, but they do it in an apolitical atmosphere, with only the community good as their mantra, and what the law is. I have found, sitting at both tables, that while this table also purports to do community good in their decision-making, we also think about other kinds of things, that are distractions, and the Planning Commission does not do that, and they should be commended for that. The other thing is the pathways. And as we look to keep baby boomers who may not want to drive anymore, and keep our kids who graduated from college and are now living in Chicago, or Ohio, or Indiana, or Boston, here instead, those are the kinds of things that those young people want. And it is one of those amenities that is a deal breaker for them. So I was glad to see us move forward on that. That's all.
I do have one more item, and I see that our Chief of Police is standing at the back of the room, and since the formal news release went out to the media, on the announcement of Charles Kraft announcing his retirement, I thought it appropriate that I say something this evening, that when I saw the news release, I was pleased to see the length and breadth of the items that were done. I don't know the individuals that actually wrote this, I can assume those that worked on it, but it really did delineate a career that has been absolutely outstanding, and that everyone is so proud of. I have sad feelings about Chief Kraft retiring, because I think he's been an asset to this entire community, and to all police officers, no matter where they are. I think he's representation of the best that there is out there. And I'm sure that there will be an appropriate retirement function, that we will be invited to attend for him. I don't know if others want to comment at this time, but I do, I did want to make that comment. I know that people reach a certain point in their life where they do want to retire, having gone through that myself, from after retiring, 33 years of teaching, and I enjoyed it so much, but there are so many things to do in life, and sometime retirement comes along, it's just the right moment for you. But I think that I'm hopeful, and I'm sure, because I have great faith in this community, that there's going to be an outpouring of love and affection for Chief Kraft, especially with all this information going out to the, to the press. I hope that they cover it very well and very thoroughly, because it certainly is well-deserving for him and the department. Anybody else have any items? Yes, Councilwoman Ayers-Marker?
I agree with the comments that were made earlier by Councilwoman Kirwin regarding our agenda packet and switching it to e-delivery. I'd like to look down the aisle, or look down the table and see if anyone's shaking their heads, and we give direction to change over. Also curious if this could be done for other boards and committees?
We don't have jurisdiction over all of them, but the ones that we do, we do them electronically anyway, or email them.
Okay.
Yes, the DDA went to that, at my suggestion, that they not email, but they went electronically, and Brian Murphy took care of that. Yes. Okay, any other items? Okay, then we're in adjournment, and we'll see you Wednesday.